Done.
Done. All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the Port Orchard City Council September 22nd regular meeting, and we are conducting our meeting via Zoom because of the governor's stay home and safe order. The link to this meeting is on our website. It's published on our agenda, and we've also provided the public a number to call in to participate in our meeting. So, and we're going to experiment with a couple of executive sessions, one early and one late, and we're going to experiment with breakout rooms, and we hope it works. And a couple of things I'd just like to it's been brought to my attention that it's a little cumbersome, our voting, and whether, and I'm not certain how to make it better. If, or do you want me to be a little more, I guess deliberate and slow down could be a solution as we're voting. So you guys have a chance to unmute yourself and vote. Another option could be voice voting. I think it would add another half hour easy onto our meeting if we vote by voice vote on all the issues, and possibly I could use unanimous consent is an item, but I'm you haven't liked that tool in the past. So I'm, Councilmember Ashby raised that question. It's your meeting, and before I get too far into this, I just wanted to get some feedback, and maybe we're not going to solve this this evening.
One of the things that I have found out, Charlotte, please correct me, but I've had conversations with the Peninsula RPTO's attorney today. And it's important that our votes be viewed, that the public can see our votes. And so I'm not sure even if we mute and unmute, how easy it is for the public to see how we vote. So I would recommend raising our hands visibly or a white sheet of paper visibly so that
With our, with our, any brack drop, it's not, you're not going to necessarily, that's why I have to hold the the flag very close to my face because
So we could raise our hands, and that provides the visual for the public.
Mr. Mayor, point order. Did you want to call to order the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance and then then begin this more?
Yeah, you know, you're absolutely correct. So let's gotten off on a track and done that, usually don't do that here, but I've done it to other boards where I so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apologize for that. So I'm just trying to take care of some housekeeping here before we take citizen comments and approve our agenda and how how we're gonna this is new territory for all of us, and we've been limping along here, and maybe I'll be a little more, a pause a little more, and if there's if there's any point where you think something is, you need to recuse yourself, or you want to voice vote, ask for it, and we'll do it. You know, otherwise, I think what we're doing is probably okay, but I probably need to try not to be so efficient in our meeting and slow down a little bit.
Mayor, when you say voicemail or voice vote, what what do you mean? We all just saying aye or?
A roll call, or Brandy calls, you each by name, and you say yea or nay.
Okay.
On a matter.
I just have a Public Works Board mandatory OPMA training, and they talked about doing the roll call versus it's not required, but you can, I think, as long as you're saying all those in favor of, and then pausing, and then all those against, that that doesn't get brushed over, and you may do a roll call for those against.
Yeah.
That would be a suggestion.
Roll call is my least favorite alternative.
Okay, I can, I can slow down between yea and nay, and if you're, you're a nay, make sure I know you're a nay. And so Brandy Guy and I can capture that for the record, or if you need me to pause so that we can talk about you recusing yourself, and Brandy will throw you in a breakout room, and we'll talk about you. So.
I think the number of nays that we have, I think the efficient thing would just be if you have nays, then you do a roll call on the nay. I mean, just who was that?
So this is Any, anyone, anyone wanting a roll call vote to speak up, and I'll gladly do it. And so then the last thing I have is thank you for those that have joined me tonight with with my backdrop, and the story behind that is, and sorry, those that were in my Rotary meeting heard this earlier today. I was in my garden Saturday morning, and I think it's naive to think that we don't have racism in our community, but I, but I think we need to talk about race inequity more, and it was, and I was kind of slapped in the face with this Saturday morning when I was working in my garden, and I have this sign in my yard, and someone, a couple my age was walking down the sidewalk, and I said good morning to them, and and the gentleman said to me, I have nothing to say to you. And I kind of took me aback, and I said, I'm sorry, why is that? And I was told because of the racist sign in my yard. And so I've taken upon myself, all the board meetings and the Zoom meetings I've been today, I've had this as a backdrop, and I've had a conversation at every board meeting, and some folks view this as political, and some folks see this as racist. And I just want to assure everybody, it's not. It's a message of compassion that I believe in these things, and that we need to have, I believe, more conversation about race inequity in our nation and in our community, because it became very apparent to me on Saturday morning that this message is being misunderstood, and that's, so thank you for your indulgence this evening. We have a lengthy agenda, two executive sessions, and I think we are going to forego committee reports and the mayor's report tonight so that we can get done before midnight. So with that, we have a published agenda, and from this agenda, I would like to ask that well, we have an executive session actually already scheduled after our public hearing, and we're going to need to add one in lieu after our discussion items at nine. So I would ask that for that change from someone, Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend our agenda to include the second, the executive session, and also under consent agenda that we include the excusing Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Deener to amend the agenda to add a second executive session, and also to excuse Councilmember Rosa Pepe in our consent items. Councilmember Kachardi.
Can we go ahead and formally remove items nine and 10, since we're not going to have committee reports, staff reports, mayor report?
That's it. It is the, the motion maker in the second agree with those amendments?
I agree.
Nine, 10, and 11.
Yeah. Yes, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna do citizen comments at the end, but probably ahead of the executive session. So that's probably reversed. It's citizen comment, then we'll go into the last executive session with no action intended afterwards. Clear as mud? Okay. All right. So it sounds, what I've heard here is we're adding a consent item C to excuse Councilmember Rosa Pepe, we're adding, we're moving nine, 10, and 11. 12 becomes nine, and 10 becomes the executive session with no action taken afterwards. Is that what I understand to be true? Okay, I'm seeing heads bobbing up and down. Further discussion of the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, no one opposed? So we, I am counting that as the agenda has now been approved. We have our first citizen comment period. I see our presenter, Ms. St. John, but I don't see any other members of the public present. So I'm going to assume that we have no public comment this evening, at least at the first period, and we are now to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Luca Reli to approve the consent agenda as amended, which includes the excusal of Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Further discussion of the consent agenda? You're none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have heard none. So the consent agenda has been approved. All right. This is working so far. And so we have a presentation tonight from Ms. Washington 2020, Valerie St. John. So Valerie, you're here to talk to us a little bit about the Ms. Washington and possibly what your platform is. So please, please welcome.
Yes, thank you so very much, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate this opportunity to join your meeting tonight. As a fellow resident in Port Orchard, I've been looking forward to meeting you all and getting some faces to the names that I've read about. So thank you so very much for this opportunity to connect with you. And as Mr. Mayor mentioned, I am Mrs. Washington American 2020. It's my official title. And I thought I would tell you a little bit about what we do at the Mrs. Washington program, my platform, and the community service work that I've been working on, the projects that I have. I'll try to keep this relatively short. It sounds like you all have a pretty late night, so I'll try not to drone on for too long. But what we do at Mrs. Washington is this is a program to empower women to make a difference in their communities, and it started off just as Mrs. American, which was an offshoot from Miss America. And all the way back in the forties, we, the program actually used to have women on stage competing with household chores and home economics, and that would be a big part of their and let's just say I'm really happy that that has changed, because I wouldn't have done very well if that were the case nowadays. So obviously, things have changed a little bit with the times, and women are are now out there in the communities making a really positive difference and a positive impact. We have two Mrs. divisions right now, and also a Miss division. So marital status does no longer hold you back from being able to be involved with one of our organizations. And a way that we do make a difference and empower other women to make a difference in the communities is by choosing our own personal platform, which is a community service based endeavor that we feel passionately about. And each woman is encouraged to choose her own. Mine is mental health, specifically before stage four, which I'll explain a little bit more about here in a moment. But I'm a licensed mental health counselor here in the area. I operate my own practice. I've been involved in mental health in one way, shape, or form for a really long time. I've watched a lot of my own personal connections and family members struggle and suffer with untreated mental illness. So that's kind of what encouraged me to get into the field and then develop this platform from here. As a practitioner, I'm really happy to be able to diagnose and treat people with with various mental health conditions, and as Mrs. Washington now, I'm not limited to just who walks through my office door, or actually, in this case, who comes onto my computer. I can actually reach out to a number of the people throughout the state as well, and reach a wider, broader audience of people to get my message across. So with that being said, a little bit more about my platform specifically. I work with Mental Health America, which is one of our nation's leading nonprofit mental health organizations. And their Before Stage Four campaign was created to help spread awareness that we need to make sure we are looking at our mental health symptoms and conditions in the same light that we would look at our physical health conditions and symptoms. For example, if we take cancer, heart disease, diabetes, we don't intervene at stage four. We intervene well before that. In fact, we have a number of preventative measures that many of us are being, being made aware of as far as trying to make sure that we don't go down the path of developing these conditions. We want to do the same thing for mental health conditions, because it's actually an average of about 10 years between when somebody starts experiencing their first symptoms of a mental illness and when they actually engage in treatment. And usually by that point, a lot of the natural supports have fallen out of place, and they're into what we call stage four of a more of a severe or more serious mental illness. So if we can intervene earlier, that's the goal. There's a higher chance of people leading healthier, longer, more productive lives in our communities. And it's also a lot less expensive for everybody as well. With, before stage four, Mental Health America has established a, an online free, totally anonymous screening tool for people. It's not a diagnostic tool, but you can go on there and take, it's kind of like one of those online quizzes where you take an assessment and determine what road you might be following down as far as what symptoms you are presenting, and what disorder you might be experiencing, depression, anxiety, post-traumatic stress, eating disorders. And once you've completed this assessment, it tells you what resources are available in your area to help you. Local resources statewide and also on a national level, too. Since we've established this online screening tool, over five million Americans, and now including Washington residents, have taken part in these online screenings, which means that many more people, or a big portion of this percentage is now accessing treatment and getting care, which is really, really good news. So we want to keep that going, and that is the long version of what my platform is all about. And then one other thing that we do at the Mrs. American Organization is we promote the Victoria's Voice Foundation, which is our national charity. And Victoria's Voice was started in 2015 by Victoria Siegel's parents, David and Jackie Siegel. Victoria, very unfortunately and tragically, lost her life as a result of a drug overdose. And it was a result of a number of years of drug experimentation that just went went sour, and unfortunately, she lost her life due to this. Since then, her parents have been wanting to make sure that we are increasing awareness about this very major issue, the drug epidemic that we're seeing in our country, and trying to make sure that we are are saving our next generations from from this epidemic. What I'm working on as Mrs. Washington is tying in mental health with this foundation. As a licensed practitioner, I have yet to see any substance abuse case that does not involve some type of mental health intervention on some level. So my goal is to help spread awareness about identifying mental health conditions and symptoms as a primary key factor in reducing substance abuse. It is absolutely essential that we combine these two efforts together. Some kind of transitioning into some community service projects that I've been working on, in case any of you are, would like to take interest. I've been working with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Out of the Darkness Experience is going on right now. You might have heard of this. They used to have it, or traditionally, there's an in-person walk that we do to raise awareness and funds for suicide prevention. This year, it is all online. So if you'd like to check that out, if you're on on social media or on Facebook, or just check out their website, it's American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, or AMSP.org. Also, I've been working with Coffee Oasis and their youth homelessness programs here in Port Orchard, and helping the youth there with some emotional regulation, distress tolerance, and just some life skills and and some mindfulness groups. COVID has been making this a little bit more difficult, of course, and so I'm trying to find a way to to get back into doing that with staying safe and keeping everybody safe. Other than that, I have a lot of other volunteer projects. If if anybody is interested in hearing more about it, or have any questions about my program or what we're doing at Mrs. Washington, I'm happy to connect with you. If you have any events that you need some publicity for or volunteer help for, that's what I'm here to do, is here to support this community. So please reach out to me. You can find me, you can email me, Mrs. Washington American 2020@gmail.com, or you can find me on that same handle on Facebook or Instagram. And thank you so very much for this opportunity and for for listening to what I have to say. I really appreciate it, and I'm really looking forward to learning more about all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to you. And council members, do you have any questions for Ms. St. John? Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, I just a comment. Thank you for what you're doing for our community. Very much appreciate it. And the question is, are you practicing locally, or where is your practice? Other than online?
Right. Well, I was practicing out of the Fur Crest, North Tacoma area, all the way up until the pandemic. And once that happened, I went 100% online, and I'm still there. It's, it was a transition, but now we, I'm able to to work with people throughout the state and even a couple people in other states, too. So it unexpectedly opened up a few other doors where I'm able to help some more people on a wider scale.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Deena?
Not a question, but just thank you. It was very informative. Gives us additional ways to think about mental wellness and how it can progress from good to bad, and I appreciated listening to you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Deener, and I appreciate your your email response, too, when I originally reached out. I really appreciate the invite and also in your comment. Thank you.
I know how challenging, my wife's a mental health professional, and I know how challenging your field is, so.
Great. Good for her.
Other comments or questions? She considers me a long-term project she hasn't solved.
I was just going to ask you, Mayor, if that decree was just to deal with you or more.
So with that, thank you, Valerie, for
Thank you.
turning us tonight, and we have considerable business to, you're welcome to stick around and and join in the fun, or I understand if you have other, other, other obligations this evening.
As much as I would love to, I've got a little seven and four-year-old, and it's getting close to bedtime, but I really thank you very much. Please, all of you, reach out if you'd like to connect more after this. So thank you for this opportunity.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, we're on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight. I don't have my gavel, but I'll knock on my desk when it comes time to to open that hearing. So we have a, an adoption of an ordinance, amending the sewer capital facilities charge and reinstating a consumer price index. Mr. Dorsey, are you giving that presentation, or is Jackie Brown?
I am, believe I'm doing that. Jackie is here in the wing to make sure that I don't say anything incorrectly or answer a question incorrectly. So on March 23rd, 2020, the city council initiated a sewer capital facilities charge update analysis by Katie Isaacson and Associates. The purpose of this analysis was to determine whether the current sewer capital facility charge was equitable and adequate to fund the needed capital improvement projects. The findings of this analysis were presented to the city council and the public on July 21st, 2020. Additionally, the study and related inquiries indicated the city would reinstate an automatic annual adjustment by the current Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for water and sewer fees and charges, other than and other than the water and sewer rates. That's a different conversation. The ordinance at issue is, in this public hearing, would amend POMC 1304 to effectuate the proposed increase to the sewer capital facility charge, or CFC, and make the necessary amendments to trigger the CPI automatic adjustment. The ordinance is on the agenda for consideration following this public hearing. Staff recommends opening the public hearing.
With that, I will open the public hearing related to amending the sewer capital facility charges. And I see no members of the public that want to testify. So with that, I will close the public hearing related to the sewer capital facility charges. All right, and we are now to our executive session. So since there's no public here, well, Brandy's gonna just not throw us in the you're gonna throw us in a room, or are you just gonna stop the recording? How do you want to do it, Brandy? Since we have no public.
Whichever you prefer. I'm just not sure if you want other staff members involved in the
The first one is fine. I don't think there's, Charlie, what do you think? Should we just stop the recording?
Uh, well, why don't we test the breakout room?
Then why don't we do that? Okay.
Uh, let me see here. I need to
Doug and, and no, Doug, Nick, and Charlie, and the council members, and I will be heading off.
Okay, we're gonna try this here. So let me see, what did I did? So there's that one. I'm gonna delete that one, and then here's this one sign. Ooh, fancy. Okay, so there's Councilmember Ashby, Attorney.
You might want to mute yourself, Brandy.
I know, I'm thinking.
You're entertaining.
Gotta have fun, right?
Because I can still hear it. She's in the room next door.
And Mayor, did you announce the length of the?
Oh, I didn't, and I, you know what, I need to, to, actually, this is just a new world. Pursuit to RCW 4230 1101I. The city council will hold a 15-minute executive session to discuss legal risks of a proposed action or current practice with legal counsel and discuss litigation that the city reasonably believes may be consent commenced by or against the agency or the city.
With action likely to follow.
With action to follow, likely to follow.
We are on.
Wonderful. All right. So we mastered a breakout room, and we're back to conduct our business items. So item A is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, section 13.04, increasing the sewer capital facilities charge, and reinstating the annual consumer price index adjustment. Mr. Dorsey, this is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. On March 23rd, 2020, the city council initiated a sewer capital facilities charge analysis by Katie Isaacson, and I don't think I'm going to read this into the record a second time. Because it's what I said just during the public hearing, unless you think I should?
I think you're probably fine.
Okay, so at this point, we had a public hearing earlier in this evening looking at the sewer CFCs and the CPI adjustment. So at this point, staff recommends adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 1304 of the municipal code, thereby increasing the sewer capital facility charge and reinstating an annual CPI adjustment. And in the packet, you do have both a clean and then the red line of, in the ordinance, where we changed from a little edit where it used to say sewer general facility fee, changed that to capital facility charge, and as we discussed at the previous presentation, it's going from $5,157 up to $8,525. And then we have the adding back in the CPI.
Thank you, DeMar. Councilmember Luca Reli, I saw you raise your hand. Need to unmute yourself, though. You're still muted. There you go.
I moved to adopt an ordinance amending chapter POMC 13.04, increasing the sewer capital facilities charge and reinstating an annual CPI adjustment.
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Luca Reli, and a second by Councilmember Deener to approve the amended capital facilities charge for the sewer rates. Councilmember Deener?
Just a quick question. This is a reinstatement. When was it removed last? It was removed in It was removed in.
Last time we did this, because we debated it at length.
It was 2015.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was repealed by ordinance 02015.
15, 15, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments related to this matter? Okay, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 1304, increasing the sewer capital facilities charges and reinstating the annual consumer price index. All in favor, please state aye. Is anyone opposed? I hear none. So the ma- matter passes six to nothing. We are to item B, adoption of an ordinance adopting the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan. Mr. Bond, this is yours.
Mr. Mayor.
You. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Nick. This is the discussion that I think I should probably recuse myself from simply because kids have transit is intending to develop some property in that area.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead and just leave the council meeting? And then I will message you when it's time for you to return.
All right, enjoy.
Okay, Mr. Bond, go ahead.
All right. I am pleased to present an ordinance adopting the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan and Development Regulations this evening. At the city council September 8th, 2020 meeting, the council reviewed the draft Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan and Development Regulations and directed staff to bring the plan and regulations to the September 22nd council meeting for consideration. The subarea plan would be adopted as Appendix C of the city's comprehensive plan. The city zoning map would be updated to reflect changes in certain parcels in the Ruby Creek Subarea. And the development regulations will be incorporated into Chapters 20.31, 20.38, and 20.127 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code and provide the authority for implementing the subarea plan. The subarea plan was reviewed by the Land Use Committee on July 6th, 2020, which recommended that the plan be forwarded to the full city council for review and approval. The Planning Commission reviewed the draft subarea plan at its June, August, and September meetings and held a public hearing on the plan and development regulations at its August and September meetings. On September 1st, 2020, after considering public testimony and comments, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the subarea plan with the additional goal and policy language in the Transportation Section regarding pedestrian and bicycle safety in the vicinity of Sidney Glen Elementary School. And I did receive an email today from Councilmember Ashby, who as usual does a very thorough review of everything that, that comes across her desk. And she pointed out there is one discrepancy in terms of the size of the subarea. It was a one number difference. I think it's just a typo that we will fix. That was on page 10 and page 43. She also asked about owner occupied units and whether this was only rentals or also allowed owner occupied type dwellings. And I responded to her that I, that the city code doesn't discriminate between rentals and owner occupied type units. We don't see a lot of condos because of the, the liability laws concerning developing condos, but they still would be allowed just like apartments would be. And then the plan mistakenly referred to Comcast as the internet provider in the area rather than wave cable. And so that will be corrected as well. So with that said, the staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance before you as presented.
Or Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance adopting the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan as Appendix C of the city's comprehensive plan and adopting corresponding amendments to the city zoning map into Chapters 20.31, 20.38, and 20.127 Port Orchard Municipal Code.
And I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Deener is the motion maker. Would you like to comment on this first?
Yes, I'd like to say that this is an extraordinary, extraordinarily well-done effort. I think we learned at the last meeting that this was very well attended by the public in terms of public input. And I think staff deserves kudos for doing a subarea plan in a pretty short order period of time. So thank you very much to staff.
Other comments? Councilmember Lucarelli?
Yes, though I was absent at the September 8th meeting, I watched the meeting. And that was the first time I really had a good look at the subarea plan and I too was really impressed. I look forward to having this developed. It's gonna be a beautiful area. And I mean, it, there's almost nothing about it that's, that's questionable. It's just beautifully planned. Thank you.
Councilmember Chirky?
Yeah, um, at our last economic development meeting, we actually kind of had a discussion, not only specific to this particular subarea plan, but just to make sure that we're just kind of double checking that, you know, from a mixed use perspective, that we're, we're enabling, I guess, the market to be able to move forward with some of their plans. I know Gary Anderson was present at that meeting and, and spoke from his professional experience and, and believes that with the additional demand from a residential perspective, that it will support the retail spaces that are, that are, that are contemplated with this plan as well. So there really wasn't any, any pushback or, or negative feelings based on, on the, on the use mix there. So just wanted to share that with the full council.
Thank you for sharing. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Chang, either one of you?
I would just say that it was the last time we updated the comprehensive plan that we entered into the idea of these centers. And they require the subarea plans and it's really nice to see that initial work actually us following through with that and creating the subarea plans. Again, a job well done to the Community Development Department.
Councilmember Chang, do you have a comment before I call on Councilmember Luc, she gets a second bite of the apple?
Yes, I, I agree that this is a very exciting plan. And I hope it's actually going to be a template for future plans in case we have more mixed use throughout the city and, and other centers.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
So it said that we were going to, we were projecting populations that exceed the PSRC recommendations for a center. Is that going to be a problem down the road at all?
I think the PSRC numbers that you are looking at are the minimum. In order to be a recognized countywide center, you have to have at least, I believe it's 10 units per acre. And so we are, we have planned this in excess of that minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Bond before we vote? Okay, I think there's a motion, Councilmember Deener, go ahead.
Just, what is, what are staff's thoughts on the next subarea plan to, to get underway?
Well, that came up today as I met with the mayor and Noah to discuss my department budget because there is, one of the things that council will be considering is, is your menu of items that we don't have enough money for is to put some money towards the next subarea plan. And if there's some potential activity around the South Kitsap Mall, if that property were to change hands and there's interest in developing, I think that would be a good candidate to look at. If that doesn't end up happening, McCormick Communities is actually working on a master plan for the village area of the McCormick Woods. And so there may be some sort of collaboration between the city and McCormick to put that plan together. And then I think the Sedgwick and Bethel area, there's also a lot of interest in seeing what's going to happen there. We've done the Bethel corridor planning efforts, so the transportation portion is done. I think that would be a good one to look at, especially if a possible annexation that's been discussed with our department recently were to happen along Bethel South. So I think there's three, three different ones we could prioritize, but there's external circumstances that will, will guide that decision-making process.
Right now, they're on the wish list.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for that question, though. It was, came up today. All right, other questions related to this matter? Okay, with, since we don't, so we'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance adopting the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Hearing none. And thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for raising your hand. I've been seeing some thumbs up. That's, that's helping. We're catch, catching that. And let me let John know he can come back. So Brandy, watch for John and let him back in the, in the room.
While we're waiting for John, just in relation to the Ruby Creek plan, Josie Radamacher, who was my intern until Friday, which was her last day, was hugely helpful in preparing that plan. So I just officially want to thank her and that, that was money well spent to have her help with all of those graphics.
It's one of the things that was discussed today too, is an intern policy and how much value and work we get from a summer intern for very little money. So kind of places to put them though. Guess within this world with Zoom, it's not a problem. Here's Mr. Claussen, welcome back. So we are to business item C, adoption of a resolution repealing resolution 056-17 and adopting updated procurement policies and procedures. Mr. Crocker, this is yours.
Great, thank you, Mayor. On April 11th, 2017, council adopted procurement policies and procedures for city procurement. On October 10th, 2017, by Resolution 056-17, the city council amended procurement policies and procedures, which set forth relevant standards of conduct and written procedures for procurement in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations. The procurement policies and procedures need to be updated to reflect changes to public works procurement thresholds for Washington as established by Gross Substitute Sen Bill 5418. The bill has increased bidding thresholds for public works and limited public works. The task resolution amends the procurement policy and procedures to set the public works bid thresholds consistent with the law. Staff would recommend the approval of the resolution to repeal 056-17 and adopt the revised procurement policies and procedures as presented. And this, I just want to make mention that this is our first shot at these procurement policies as there are additional updates that need to take place. But this was one of high importance that we wanted to right away due to, to limited staffing resources. We are hiring a procurement specialist and once he gets on board, I think I would expect for him to go through and find additional updates to bring forward to council in the near future.
The real driver to these thresholds was we got that money from the Rotary Club to do the improvements at Reta Turner Park. The project continued to grow in cost and our current policies would prevent us from doing that work in-house. And they are, our limits are much lower than the, the new state laws that we haven't adopted, or state practice policies that we haven't adopted. So this is just updating us to be consistent with state law and allow our public works to do more work on our own. So with that, entertain a motion or questions?
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution repealing resolution number 056-17 and adopting the revised procurement policies and procedures as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Kuchardi, a second by Councilmember Claussen. Are there any questions for Mr. Bond, or excuse me, Mr. Crocker on this matter? I am not hearing none, any, and it seems pretty straightforward. So you'd be voting on these updated procurement policies and procedures? And all in favor of approving this, please state aye.
Aye.
And is anyone opposed? And hearing none, these policies and procedures have been approved. All right, we will move on to item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with AquaTech LLC for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods retrofit step system retrofit. Did I say retrofit too many times? Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. A request for proposals was published in the Kitsap Sun, the Daily Journal of Commerce and the City's webpage on July 31st and August 7th of 2020. And the project bid documents were uploaded to the Washington Builders Exchange for the McCormick Woods Step System retrofit project or program. By the September 11th, 2022 PM deadline, the city of Port Orchard received three qualified bids for the 82 conversions that we're doing at the end of this year and the beginning of next year. Rogelin at one point, or $1,013,390.44 correct equipment at $668,380.68 and AquaTech was at $635,692.98.27 Upon review by public work staff, it was determined that AquaTech LLC's bid is $635,698.27 with all applicable tax included, was the lowest responsible bidder for the 82 annual step system conversion scheduled for 2020. And I believe no, we're, this is gonna go 2020 and 2021, just to be on the safe side. And additionally, the public works department was, has confirmed that the bidding requirements for the public, public work was followed and the project proposal is fully funded within the approved 2019-2020 budget. And I think again, no, I think we provided for some carryover for this project. So staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution 039-20, authorizing the mayor to execute contract C059-20 with AquaTech LLC. Well, there it is. For the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods Step System retrofit project in the amount of $635,698.27 and documenting the formal competitive bid procurement and down in the fiscal impact. We did budget 78, 780,000 for this activity in the previous budget. And we are providing within the upcoming budget carryover.
Councilmember Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 039-20, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C059-20 with AquaTech LLC for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods Step System retrofit project in an amount of $635,698.27 and documented the formal competitive bid procurement procedures.
Second.
Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Deener. I think it's important to note too, we've been at these step conversions for 10 years. We've reached out to every homeowner in McCormick Woods and this is the last 88 homes that want to convert. We've got about 200 that have passed on that opportunity. And we plan to put some money for this activity in the next biennial budget and circle back to those homeowners that maybe those homes have sold or, or people were leery of these conversions, but they're, they're vital, I think, to the health of the sewer lift stations that we're building because the affluent that, that they out, that output is highly corrosive, so.
And I just confirm that it is 180 working days. So I guess no, when we meet tomorrow, we'll want to make sure that we see what we budgeted for the carryover of the 780,000.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, I just, has AquaTech done any of this work first in the past?
Let's go ahead, Mark. I know the answer to this, but.
It's, it's a new company that came out of correct equipment.
AquaTech sure seems like a funny name for a sewer company, but it is.
I just, because this, because we've been doing this for so many years, I wondered if it was a contractor that we had worked with before.
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
Other questions? Councilmember Kuchardi?
Just a reminder for council, so those homes that have declined the, I guess, the, the transition to the step system, are their systems now not, not covered by the city? The repairs of that, they're, they're on their own for those?
No, we're, we're still responsible for those systems. Now, they're very problematic and we used to spend about $50,000 a year on service calls on those. You know, the floats, I mean, Councilmember Kuchardi, you had one. And you know, the float stick, they, they have all kinds of challenges. And what we're, what we're installing are, is, you know, much more modern and it doesn't have the, the reliability issues that those others, the other systems had. I mean, we were having, when the float stick, then the sewer backs up and causing, can cause. I mean, we were having, when the float stick, then the sewer backs up and causing, can cause us all kinds of problems.
I was just remembering that there was a time in the future that, you know, you can, you can take this, this, this transfer over to the new system. It'd be paid for by the city, but in time that you're existing would become your responsibility in my, in my long enough statement.
Originally, if you remember, Mayor, we were going to do this originally as a 10-year program. I think we're on year 12, so we've extended it because of people that have sold their homes. But your earlier question had to do with the contract that we inherited from the county. And basically what was happening was the public works department really was, didn't understand that agreement. And so we were, we were maintaining parts of the step system that we should have never, we were going out on emergency calls to to fix a soft clog and we should never have done that. So what we've done is take the, a number of these step systems out and replace with grinders. And the remaining step systems, they're still on the five-year pump out cycle. They're still on the, every 10 years, they get a new pump. But what's changed is we, if somebody has a problem, we usually have them fix it now. And then they issue a tort claim and we review if it was pump or pump component related or if it was something else, which most of the time it's a, it's, it's a soft clog from the house to the tank. So we've reduced our overtime calls by really having those step conversion or step homeowners not just call the city and they call a plumber and then we deal with who, who actually gets reimbursed or who doesn't.
And will this go on for perpetuity? Is there a time in the future that we could draw a line in the sand?
No, it's forever. There was no, the step, the, the agreement that McCormick and the county agreed to has no sunset. The limitations are that they only get a new pump every 10 years and that they only get pumped out once every five years.
There's nothing we can do to, to modify that and try to reduce that liability? Sale of a, sale of a home, something where it just doesn't transfer on? I don't know if that'd be worth looking into.
I didn't see any language in the original Kitsap County McCormick agreement that allowed for that.
We are, I mean, these have been a tremendous success.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, the conversions have been voluntary. It is part of the voluntary conversion. They have to understand that they know, that they have to maintain.
I just want to make sure that the new homes being built in McCormick are being built with newer technology and not this antiquated, okay?
Yeah, we don't allow, we don't allow stuff.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Yep, that we, we stopped that when we started this program and it was this, these are the older homes that were built under the county's agreement.
Yeah, there were 632 original step homes and I'm not sure where we're at right now with how many we've converted, but.
Just under 200 left. So, but, okay, further questions? All right, with that, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Aqua Tech Inc. LLC for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods Step System retrofit. All in favor, please say aye. Is anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, the motion is approved. Motion is approved. We are to item E, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with HDR Inc. For the, to conduct a study of consolidating the McCormick Woods and Port Orchard water systems. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. And this one, Jackie, make sure that you're, you're listening for questions on this because this is kind of your thing here. So the city of Port Orchard has been awarded a grant by the Washington State Department of Health, Office of the Drinking Water to conduct a study of consolidating the McCormick Woods and the city of Port Orchard water systems. On May 4th, 2020, the city's public works department selected three qualified firms from the current MRSC professional services roster, which is attached Exhibit A for the main category, excuse me, engineering services in the subcategory of water system planning and design. Staff then scored each statement of qualification and selected HDR Engineering Incorporated as being the most qualified, excuse me, professional services engineering firm for the project. On August 7th, 2020, the city received a scope of work from HDR Engineering in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the water system consolidation study. Staff negotiated a contract with HDR. Oh wait. No, not to exceed $30,000 for the study and staff negotiated a contract with HDR, which is attached. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with HDR Inc. for the McCormick Woods and City of Port Orchard water consolidation studying documenting the professional services procedures. And yes, that's a $30,000 contract.
For Luke Corelli.
I moved to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with HDR Engineering, Engineering Inc. for the McCormick Woods and City of Port Orchard Water System Consolidation Study and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second.
Motion by council member Luke Corelli and a second by council member Clausen, and I see your attorney raising her hand.
Mayor, I apologize. I believe there was a memo, a legal memo that was intended to be circulated, but in the busyness of the city right now, it was not circulated and it's likely my fault. I do want to draw attention. I can't speak to legal risk in an open meeting, but I, I, the, the subject matter of my memo is one that we discussed before with regards to engineering contracts and modifications that engineering firms request be made to the indemnification provisions in these contracts. And the change at issue is on page 117 of the packet. If I'm looking at the right pagination, the section is called section E, allocation of risk. This is a section that was added at the request of the engineering firm. I'm happy to move to executive session if the council has questions. This is, however, a change that the council, that we have discussed in the past with regards to engineering firms requesting to modify contracts with regards to indemnification.
And they're, so they're limiting their risk to $250,000 on this $30,000 contract. Is that correct? Does anyone have any concerns or want to have an executive session related to this matter?
I would just ask if, from our attorney, does she have any concerns?
I unfortunately can't speak to that in an open meeting. I would say this, I would say this, that this, the analysis that I presented to you before about these types of limitations holds true here as well.
Yes, she always has.
Thank you.
So councilmember Clausen.
A couple of things. One, this is just looking at feasibility options for connecting the two systems. So I'm assuming that if we were to move forward with selecting a preferred option, there would really need to be more engineering and a lot of in-depth look before we would be ready to commit anything more than just this study. So I for one am comfortable with the limited liability for a $30,000 contract. My second question is in regards to the scope of work. And it's more curiosity than anything else. As I read through the scope, we're looking at, and I appreciate there's a difference in elevations, but we're looking at booster pumps to bring the city's system up to McCormick's. And it appears that what we're looking at is a one-way type of connection from, shall we say, the city to the McCormick system. Will there be an opportunity for a reverse flow or is that something that would be determined later?
I can speak to that if you'd like, Mayor. Absolutely. We do plan on looking at installing pressure reducing stations at Glenwood and at, on Old Clifton both, along with the, with the booster stations to be able to move water either way. The purpose of this study is so that I have some tangible, some, some tangible material that I can use in, in which to apply for bigger funding for the actual construction work.
So Jack, if I'm understanding, you're right, we need pumps to move it one way and gravity takes over and we need pressure, pressure reducing valves as it comes back the other way.
Correct.
That's what I heard as well. Thank you.
Depending on which part of the system is calling for water, which one of those would be activated?
So basically what we're talking about, it's an inner tie, one on Old Clifton and one coming up on the backside of McCormick between the 390 and the 580 zone.
And which one is more viable? Because we're probably not going to construct both.
Right. And then there'll be the fluoridation issue that will also be a part of this conversation at one point. Because once we connect the systems, then we have, we have to address that issue.
But once we connect the systems, we have to be disconnected from Bremerton because of the fluoride. As answer to your question, Mayor, going on Old Clifton is, we're about a mile apart. And going the other way, if we can't go through Mr. Scrobet's property, then, then it's a two miles around by the fire station. But with the advent of Stetson Heights, we're going to have probably about nearly 50% of that main in there. And we really, it really would be better to have both connections at our earliest opportunity, just for redundancy of the system.
Councilmember Kuchardi, I saw your hand.
Yeah, she just answered my question. It sounds like this will also tie to the new Stetson development once that comes online in the future.
In McCormick East, that Gem Wine Holdings.
Other questions? Thank you, Jackie, for, for finding this grant that allows us to do this study. This is great.
You're welcome, Mayor.
So we're, you'll be voting on adoption of a resolution approving a contract with HDR Inc. to conduct a study of the consolidation of the McCormick Woods and Port Orchard water systems. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? You're none? The motion is approved. We're on to item F, adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to designate, designate, to initiate a legal action to seek abatement of code violation occurring at Southeast Crawford Road. And this is Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Doug Price, the city code enforcement officer is in attendance and I'm going to have him present on the next two items, which both deal with code violations and abatement of those violations on Crawford Road. So Mr. Price.
Okay, so I'll present the, the staff report on the seeking the abatement of Crawford Road. By this resolution, the city council would authorize the mayor designate to commence litigation against Devon Charles Pate and the owners of vehicles and real property located at Southeast Crawford Road as identified in the September 1, 2020 notice in order to abate junk vehicles and public nuisance for ongoing public nuisance conditions and violations of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. By way of background, Southeast Crawford Road is a private road collectively owned by the owners of the properties adjoining the road. In conjunction with efforts to clean up various properties along Crawford Road ongoing since 2017, the city of Port Orchard has been pursuing the removal of junk and inoperable vehicles and vehicle dismantling and repair activities from the roadway. Efforts began with informal inspection and contact with residents and owners have, and have progressed to a notice in order to abate junk vehicles and public nuisance issued on September 1st, 2020. Despite these efforts, the conditions have gotten significantly worse over the course of this time. The numerous junk and inoperable vehicles, many of which are full of junk and garbage, contribute to the nuisance conditions in the neighborhood and obstruct the road for residents, the public, and emergency and utility vehicles. In addition, owners who are attempting to clean up their properties and demolish dangerous buildings can't get equipment to their properties to do so. As Crawford Road is private, the city's parking regulations do not apply and junk, inoperable, unlicensed, and nuisance vehicles cannot be impounded by the city as they can on, on public roads. As with any private property, the road is subject to abatement under POMC chapters 9.30 nuisances and 1092 junk vehicles. The notice and orders were served on September 1st and 3rd, 2020, to each owner of Southeast Crawford Road and to the registered owner of each of the 18 junk and nuisance vehicles present on the road at that time by certified and regular mail posted on the road and on each vehicle, requiring removal of the violations within 10 days. The orders were not appealed and I re-inspected on September 14th, 2020, finding 17 of the 18 vehicles remaining on the road parcel. The vehicles violate Port Orchard Municipal Code chapters 930, 2066, and 1092 and constitute a public nuisance under these regulations. The city has the authority to abate nuisances and junk vehicles, to expend public funds for that purpose and to recover those funds via various means under the authority of these regulations and under RCW 7.48 and 9.66. The city has budgeted funds for the abatement of dangerous buildings and public nuisances. The next step to secure compliance with the city's notice and order is to file a civil action and seek, among other relief, a warrant of abatement from the Kitsap County Superior Court to enter the property and abate the violations. Authorization to initiate lawsuits on behalf of the city must be obtained from the Port Orchard City Council. And the staff's recommendation is to provide authorization to the mayor or designate, that would be the code enforcement officer and the city attorney, to move forward with the lawsuit.
Councilmember Chang.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor or designate to cause, commence legal action against the owners of the vehicles and real property located at Southeast Crawford Road for all claims and damages appropriate to remediate the public nuisance conditions and code violations existing on said property.
Motion by council member Chang, a second by council member Deener. Anyone wishing to comment on this or any questions for Mr. Crawford, or Mr. Mr. Price?
I just would say thank you for the ongoing attention to this matter. It certainly is problematic on many fronts and our continued emphasis to get this cleaned up and mitigated is appreciated.
Crawford is an interesting patchwork of properties. I remember doorbelling there and just being quite mystified. You had some really rundown buildings, but there was also a really beautiful house that I believe is next door to the property in question. I didn't speak to the owner of that house, but I was just like, how they felt about the apartment. I'm sure that they are delighted with what you're doing and thank you for your efforts.
Or Deener?
I know that these can be tough to take care of and I wish you well on this and thank you for your efforts.
Great. Comments or questions? Voting on adoption of resolution authorizing legal action to seek abatement of code violations occurring in, at Southeast Crawford Road. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're none? So the resolution is approved. Item G, adoption of a resolution authorizing legal action to seek abatement of code violations occurring at 1743 Southeast Crawford Road. This is probably Mr. Price again.
Yes, and so this is related to the last and this is the property that's the, the worst problem. And so by this resolution, the city council would authorize the mayor designate to commence litigation against the owner of real property located at 1743 Southeast Crawford Road, Kitsap County, tax parcel number 01230130312004 for ongoing public nuisance conditions and violations of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. By way of background, the city of Port Orchard has been pursuing the cleanup of 1743 Southeast Crawford Road and the associated portion of the private road here after the property under the provisions of various chapters of Port Orchard Municipal Code since 2017. Efforts began with an informal inspection and personal contact and have progressed to a notice in order to abate public nuisance issued on November 20th, 2019. During that time, the condition of the property and road have gotten significantly worse over the course of that time. The property is now entirely filled with junk, trash, indoor furniture, and household goods left outside and exposed to the weather, vehicle parts and components, and inoperable, apparently inoperable junk wrecked and/or dismantled or partially dismantled vehicles, including cars, trucks, motorcycles, and mopeds, riding lawn mowers, boats, bicycles, and recreational vehicles. The road contains numerous vehicles not registered but self-attributed to the owner. The road contains numerous vehicles not registered but self attributed to the owner of the property, some inoperable, wrecked, being worked on, being dismantled and used for parts, or just being stored due to the lack of available space on the property. The owner continues to accumulate vehicles. The city has received frequent complaints regarding the property and continues to receive complaints. The notice in order to abate was served to the owner by certified and regular mail and posted on the property. The owner verbally acknowledged receipt of the notice in order and pro- promised several times that he would get it done and did briefly make some significant progress, but has not continued to do so. Code enforcement officer Doug Price re-inspected the property on May eighth two thousand twenty, finding that vehicles that had been removed were back, and the condition appeared to be back to at least as bad as before the notice in order was issued. These conditions on the property violate Port Orchard Municipal Code chapters nine point thirty, twenty point six six, and ten point nine two, and constitute a public nuisance under these regulations. The city has the authority to abate nuisances and junk vehicles, to expend public funds for that purpose, and to recover those funds via various various means under the authority of these regulations and RCW seven point four eight and nine point six six. And additionally, to file a lien against the property under the authority of RCW thirty-five A point two one point four zero five. The city has budgeted funds for the abatement of dangerous buildings and public nuisances. The vehicles on the road obstruct residents, the public, and emergency and utility vehicles, including garbage truck and others from reaching the properties at the end of the road and sometimes block the road entirely. The next step to secure compliance with the city's notice and order is to file a civil action and seek, among other relief, a warrant of abatement from the Kitsap County Superior Court to enter the property and abate the violations. Authorization to initiate lawsuits on behalf of the city must be obtained from the Port Orchard City Council. The staff's recommendation is provide authorization to the mayor or designate code enforcement officer and city attorney to move forward with this lawsuit.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor or designate to commence legal action against the owners of real property located at one seven four three Southeast Crawford Road for all claims and damages appropriate to remediate the public nuisance conditions and code violations existing on said property.
I heard multiple seconds, so I'm going to go with the second by Councilmember Clausen and the main motion by Councilmember Ashby. So questions or comments? I think it's as similar to the prior action. Councilmember Kachari?
Yeah, just kind of for the record, you know, I think when Mr. Price, you know, came to the city, this is obviously something he's 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 brought forward as a priority. We did not, if my memory serves me right, we did not used to budget for these types of actions, and so it's great to see that his emphasis to 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 keep these matters of public safety and and health, you know, top of mind, and that this council and and the mayor has created budget authority, and that we can move forward and actually have a the resources in place to to move forward and 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 deal with these issues. So like, thank you again, Mr. Price.
I would also just say that I think it's important for the neighborhood that the city do what we can when there is one property that is affecting the health and safety of the neighborhood. I think it's incumbent on us to take action, and again, I too compliment Mr. Price for his diligence in in seeing this through.
And it's the credit also goes to to for to the council for having the foresight to to put funds in the budget so that we're not so that we can do these things because that is important to the health and safety of our communities and our neighborhoods to have resources to to go deal with these issues as they as they arise, and so thank you. So any other comments or questions? All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing legal action to seek abatement of code violations occurring at seventeen forty-three Southeast Crawford Road. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? I hear none, so go to work, Mr. Price. And you're welcome to hang out the rest of the night with us, but I understand if you don't want to. We're to item H, approval and approve and ratify the mayor's second extension proclamation of emergency pursuant to RCW thirty-eight fifty-two seventy. Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This evening before you is a ratification of the mayor's second extension of the proclamation of local emergency. You'll recall that under the municipal code and under RCW, the mayor is authorized to declare or proclaim an emergency condition. The primary use of that tool is to temporarily suspend procurement rules so that purchases can be made for to to address necessary issues arising from the stated emergency. The mayor's original proclamation occurred back in March and was extended once, and then this would extend the emergency situation through the end to the end of the year. It can always be early or rescinded by the mayor where conditions to change, and then we would come back to the council to acknowledge that rescission, but this would officially proclaim through December thirty-first at midnight or eleven fifty-nine a proclamation. And under the RCW, it's recommended that we come to council for ratification of that proclamation in order to sort of button it up and make it official. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Or Kachari?
Mayor, move to approve and ratify the mayor's second extension of the proclamation of local emergency dated the thirteenth of September two thousand twenty pursuant to the Port Orchard Municipal Code two dot eight zero dot two one zero and RCW thirty-eight dot five two dot zero seven zero.
Second.
Yes, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli, main motion by Councilmember Kachari. Who would have thought in February when I when I made this proclamation that here in September we would still be conducting meetings this way and extending this emergency powers till the end of the year. It's what a year. I'm just thankful that Sunday my wife and I were went able to go hike Green Mountain and breathe some fresh air, and that was a some some great relief because pandemic and smoke and we've had enough of each other. I don't know about the recipe a bit. Indoor being indoors for too long is world is tough, so but anyway. For my personal plight, plight, so. You'll be voting on to ratify my second extension of the proclamation of emergency dated September thirteenth twenty twenty pursuant to a Port Orchard Municipal Code two point eight oh point two one oh and two oh seven oh. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're none. The emergency powers have been extended to the end of the year. We are to item I, approval of a public participation program for the South Kids App Community Event Center. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. So the public participation program before you tonight was prepared based on the recommendation of the steering committee that's been assembled for the South Kitsap Community Event Center. The community, the the steering committee had a lot of discussion about how to conduct outreach for this very visible and highly impactful project in the city. And we wanted to make sure that we were making all efforts to reach every corner of our community and make everyone in the city feel included in this process. And even though a public participation program is not required for a project of this type, we we follow the template of our last comprehensive plan update to clearly explain the project, the objectives, and the public engagement opportunities that will take place throughout the process. And we felt it was important to have a written document to guide us and so that the public could look to that to understand where this project came from and where it is going. There is one correction to the document in your packet tonight. John Morrissey from the Kitsap Credit Kitsap Credit Union has been added to the steering committee at the request of the Public Facilities District so that they have somebody participating in the process.
He's our representative on the Public Facilities Board, that's so that's how he he got came on the committee.
Correct, so so this plan, it's I I I think it pretty clearly explains what we're doing. If council has any suggested changes, we could certainly make those. But it is our intent to launch the the project website next Monday and to begin our first bit of public outreach, which has to do with programming the building and trying to understand what sorts of internal and outdoor spaces the community wants to see as part of the project. And so we are hoping to have this adopted prior to initiating that that outreach.
Councilmember Clausen.
Two kind of editorial comments, one on page two of five or page one fifty-eight of our packet. I just find it interesting that the Portage Police Department is identified as other governmental organizations and none of the other departments in the city. And probably more important, if you will, on my comments is, and I'm scrolling to that page, it's, I believe, yeah, on page five of five, it lists that notices will be published in the Portage Independent Official Newspaper Record. I believe that Bremerton Sun is now our official newspaper, so.
Good catch. Councilmember Lucarelli, you raised your hand.
I did. I don't see that the South Kitsap Rotary is listed. And even though it says the Rotary Club of Port Orchard, I wouldn't mind seeing South Kitsap.
The same company that did, so the the subconsultant for the outreach is the same subconsultant that did the Imagine Port Orchard body of work, so they have a very good contact list to to start the for the base for the this body of work.
Yeah, and along those same lines, the Kitsap Regional Library also has a really good membership and community and various groups that use their facilities that they're going to reach out to for us. So the the three changes you've you've indicated, I I I will make note of those and make sure those get into the final document. If there's any others, please feel free.
Councilmember Kachari? You're you're muted, Kachari.
I was going to go ahead and make the motion so we can continue discussion. I move to approve the public participation program for the South Kitsap Community Event Center.
Second, with the amendments that have been mentioned so far?
Yes.
Okay, and when the second concurs?
Yes.
Okay, so let's continue that dialogue then with a motion and a second and a three amendments that have been noted so far. Councilmember Kachari?
Yeah, just a scribbler's error on that page one fifty-eight that lists the Bremerton Conference Center, and the official name is is actually the Kitsap Conference Center.
Councilmember Chang, what do you have?
Um, I should have asked this last time when Laurie was presenting, but it just struck me this time that I don't know much about the creative serotonin creative. I assume that they were a local group, but all I could find online is a company based in Brisbane, Australia. Is that them? Are they a local company?
They are a local company.
Okay.
The same local company that did the Imagine Port Orchard.
I I did hear that, yeah.
Yes. Thank you for that question. Any other questions, comments? We're excited to get this going. I had extensive conversations with the bank again today. And where we're at, and they're eagerly awaiting us. So this through this process, we're still going through a site of there's this process, we're still going through a site evaluation process, but we need to know to feed this other process, what uses are important to the public. We'll drive this also, so we want to hear from the community as we're progressing, so. Councilmember Kachari?
Yeah, and just a point of order, like, once again, this this agenda item was in front of the Economic Development Council Committee Meeting last week, and we we discussed this at length and then talked about the need to expand to all the local different service organizations, et cetera. So just want to let the council know that this was also discussed at the committee level.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, you'd be voting on the approval of the public participation program for the South Hitsa Community Event Center with the amendments that were mentioned this evening. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The thank you for your approval of the communications plan, participation plan. We are to item J. Tony Lang is still with us, I think. No, he left. This was his body of work.
I'll do this.
So approval and agreement with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. for the public works ancillary facilities security improvements. So they did City Hall, and now we're wanting to move forward with some other sites. So Mr. Dorsey.
Yeah, I think Tony's doing his OC online stuff or his whatever. So on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the Port Orchard City Council authorized an agreement with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. through Washington, the Washington State Department Enterprise Services Contract Number zero three zero one seven to upgrade the city hall access points with an electronic key card system. That agreement was the first phase in a multi-phase effort to acquire the software needed to expand access security to other city-owned public works, water and sewer primarily, ancillary facilities dispersed throughout the city, as staff has recognized the need for upgraded security from the current hard key system, which provides no benefits for the monitoring of these crucial infrastructure sites. These ancillary facilities house the machinery and chemicals needed for the day-to-day potable water production distribution and the wastewater collection conveyance operations and thereby protect public health. The city desires to piggyback on the Washington State Department Enterprise Systems Contract Number zero three zero one seven for these additional phases of the security upgrade project. By this agreement, the council would authorize the next phase of security upgrade for city-owned facilities. The public workshops renovations are now complete. Hopefully you saw those photos that came out today. And in addition to the recent interior space remodel, that facility could also benefit from electronic key cards for accessing the facility and chip keys and padlocks for accessing the gated yard. The public workshop security upgrade will be the first phase or phase one of the ancillary water and sewer facilities mentioned above. Phase two will include securing all exterior access points to each water and sewer facility with chip keys that will have the ability to grant or deny permission and track entry. All interior locks at each facility will be upgraded in the future if management deems this necessary as identified below. So we have basically the two phases, just the public workshop, which includes licensing at twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Phase two is then the ancillary facilities for an additional twenty-seven thousand ninety dollars and eighty-six cents. So the recommendation, you have two alternatives. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to enter an agreement with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. for the ancillary facility security improvements under either option one, which is where we go with the shop only at twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Or option two, where we do the phase one in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus adding the phase two, which is the twenty-seven thousand ninety which then has the total of fifty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Councilmember Clausen?
Just a question. In reading this, this is currently unbudgeted. Do we know where the funds would come for either option one or option two?
Mr. Crocker, I'll let you answer that. These are improvements that we really have challenge, we've been challenged with
So I'll I'll directly answer John's question. Yes, we have looked at our utility enterprise funds and and identified funding for these projects. Of course, the nature of these projects, in our minds, the mayor and the the management team would elevate the need to do this now. It's very important that we secure our critical infrastructure and support our public workshop and our team members. So yes, we have identified the funding for it, and I would bring forward an amendment when we do the end of year cleanup budget.
These are, these are, I would say both of these options are extremely important. From, we've got millions of dollars worth of From, we've got millions of dollars worth of equipment and, and, and at the public workshop and we have. Public health and safety concerns with not securing and tracking access to our critical infrastructure. So. Councilmember.
Certainly don't deny the importance of it. He's worked for a number of years, but. When it comes to $53,000, it's just nice to know that you've identified where they're coming. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to. Authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. For the ancillary facility security improvements and I would. Go with option two. Phase one public workshop at an amount of $26,487,000. Plus phase two of the water and sanitary sewer facilities. And an additional amount of $27,090.86 applicable tax included for a total of $53,577.86. Second.
Second by Councilmember Cuthbert and a main motion by Councilmember Clausen.
And I would like to point out that there's some, there's, if we just went with option two, I didn't. List that as an option. If we went with option two and then did option one later, that it actually costs more money. There's a licensing that. Comes out of the gate. With the, the first option initially, so there, there are some efficiencies. By doing it with the option two. And then the other issue is to kind of. Touch on what the mayor said, we have had in this last year, we have had a few incidents. Where. We needed, we had some security breach.
I went with option two, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
Not all of this is going to be coming out of the utilities. Funding, correct?
The option two, the second portion of it comes out of the utilities because it's the utilities facilities. The shop itself has more facets to that. There's the street fund, the sewer water, the storm water. So that there's, it's spread, the shop is spread across. Multiple facets that the. Second piece is solely sewer and water infrastructure. It's the gates at sewer, well sites. It's the gate that said sewer lift stations.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was divided up. I mean, we were out there and we saw that. Lock that had been cut. We saw the, the chains and such. We do need to secure these sites, so I just wanted to make sure it's divided up.
Yes, and it will be cost allocated to the, to the property, you know, whatever that infrastructure is. And then going forward, when we build new facilities. These, similar to City Hall, will have contact points that, that they'll be built in buildings versus these chip locks. So take, take it a step farther going forward. They've been, it's been a huge improvement here at City Hall. Not everybody likes it, but. You got to remember to take your card with you when you go to the restroom or you got to knock on the window. So anyway, we're, we have a motion and a second on the floor and. Further questions or comments? And Charlie, I still have your key card in my desk drawer. It's been there for months, but you just haven't been here.
Thank you.
Keeping it safe for you. So you'll be voting on the agreement with Stanley. Security Solutions for the Public Works Ancillary Facility Security Improvements. All in favor, please say aye. And I voted, I don't know why I voted. Old habit. So Brandy, don't count my vote. We are to item K, approval of an amendment number two to contract. Number 02319 with Transportation Solutions, Inc. Consultants for the Traffic Impact Fee Study Update. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. And this is one of Chris's items, so hopefully I'll get it right. On February 12th, 2020, the Merrick's Q to Contract C 023-19 with TSI, who is our transportation consultant. For an update to the city's traffic impact fee study and the associated traffic modeling. And we talked about this at today's transportation meeting. The consultant has completed the traffic modeling and draft study. Staff has been coordinating with the Transportation Committee and the consultant. And council has provided direction on impact fee rate alternatives. The city's desire to have a uniform citywide traffic impact fee. But currently we have a separate impact fee that exists for McCormick Woods. The city has been negotiating with the developers. To restructure the McCormick Woods Development Agreement. It appears that. Several more months until, it'll be several months until these negotiations are concluded. The city desires to move forward with implementing new impact fees in order to collect increased fees that are more in line with comparable cities. And to better address growth-related transportation impacts. Staff is recommending that the city update. The traffic impact fees this year and follow up next year by adopting a uniform citywide traffic impact fee. The Transportation Committee supports this approach. It is proposed that the scope for the traffic impact fee study will be expanded to address a phased impact fee implementation. And consultation fees will be increased by $7,000 to address this change. The new total amount for the traffic impact fee study will now be $32,000. No changes are proposed to the duration of the contract. Please refer to the attached amendment two and TSI's August 25th, 2020 letter describing the scope and fee for additional information. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two to contract number C 023-19. With TSI Consulting for the Traffic Impact Fee Study. I want to not say not to exceed. Of four, $7,000 for a total amount now at $32,000. So in your motion, please omit not to exceed. And replace it with of. Thank you.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute agreement amendment number two of contract number C 023-19. With TSI Consulting. For the traffic impact fee study in an amount of $7,000 for a total amended contract amount of $32,000.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Ashby, a second by Councilmember Deener. Are there questions for Mr. Dorsey on this? I think we're all aware, we're trying to get this to the finish line and get it approved. As quickly as possible, so.
What, what we have discussed at the Transportation Committee. And what I believe we discussed at work study is because of the delay or the length of time it's taking to do the McCormick Woods. New development agreement, we want to move forward with the traffic impact fees. So doing this, we will equalize the fees, but we will account for them separately. And once the agreement is complete, then we will look at whether we want to blend those together. But we need this work done in order to separate the fees out.
Well said. For the questions. Okay, you'll be voting on approval of amendment number two to contract number 023-point-19. With Transportation Solution, Inc. Consultants for the Transportation Impact Fee Study Update. They state aye if you approve. Anyone opposed? I hear none. The amendment has been approved. We are to our last business item, which is approval of the September 8th Work Study Council Meeting Minutes. And Councilmember Lucarelli, I believe you'll abstain, but I do have a motion to approve those minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Clausen.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes as published.
Second. Second by Councilmember Cuthbert, a motion by Councilmember Clausen. A further discussion of the minutes of the September 8th meeting. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we have one abstention, Councilmember Lucarelli. Okay, we have, is Tony hanging out to give a presentation on the video reservoir cleaning? Is that why he's here? Mr. Dorsey?
No, no, we haven't gotten the video back yet from the advanced diving.
That is sweet because I was asking, going to ask you to, the night is getting long and that we not watch videos of divers in the tank tonight.
So yeah, I've, I've reached out to them and they were supposed to get it to me sometime this week, but I've yet to see it, so.
Add that to the future. Future agenda. So we'll, Mr. Crocker, we're just down to one discussion item and then we'll head to our executive session. Noah, I think you're, this is, you're leading this discussion about the capital projects and our, that we're having our current.
Yeah, so I'm just going to try to keep this very succinct and short because it is late and I share my screen here. And so for council, this is just a preview, a sneak peek of the capital budget coming forward in next month. We've kind of talked about many of these capital projects as we've gone along and built the budget. And so now we've come to a point where we have most of the capital kind of constructed with some few things to iron out. So again, sneak peek, the grand total capital construction budget for the biennial is $16 million. For our 302 Capital Construction Fund, which is our general facilities, general. Construction is at 315,000. Our street capital construction fund is at 2.34 million dollars. And we talked about that with the Transportation Committee earlier this evening. Our water capital constructions fund, we have allocated 2.957 million dollars. Storm drainage capital construction, we have zero, but I'm going to come back to that. And then sewer capital construction, we have 7.73 million dollars for the marine pump station. Of note and of other significant projects that we have in the budget, we have the community center project, $300,000, which is grant funded from the PFD. We have the fund O2 Transportation O&amp;M, 4.34 million dollars. And we'll continue to talk about how we're thinking about investing in transportation and other conversations about shoring up funding for that. And then lastly, storm drainage comprehensive plan, it's not in the capital side, but is a significant. Request and asked to do a full storm drainage comprehensive plan for the city in order to us, in order for us to actually build a storm comprehensive capital plan going forward. So real briefly, these are high-level snapshots for the fund 302. We are budgeting to complete the McCormick Splash Pad retrofit. It's a total project of roughly $250,000. We have 100,000 in the current biennial budget. But with where we progressed year to date at 17,000, I expect there to be some additional money for 2021. I have currently 115,000, so that might change as we, at the end of year, to fully fund the project in the next biennial. We have our city hall improvements, design work, total estimate at 357,000 dollars. We have just recently received the draft contract for roughly $107,000 to be completed at 30% design in this year. That would mean that the remaining $250,000 would get us to 100% design in the next biennial budget. Again, I've already mentioned the community center paid for from OO1, but is a reimbursement-based project. The 304 fund, again, we talked about this with the Transportation Committee earlier this evening. All these projects are identified in our Transportation Improvement Plan. All these projects are being funded from current resources, so current fund balances in our fund 111. Our impact fee fund as well as grants that we have for several of the projects. We put this together as a conservative capital construction budget for fund 304. In the respect that we know we have the funds available and we have these projects assigned in our tip and can, and can carries forward and actually execute. We're going to continue to have conversations of whether this is the right mix, but at this point, this is kind of where we're at. More conversations to be had with the mayor and Public Works Department as we receive some new information now. Some larger capital projects that we were on grant award information. Fund 413 is our water capital construction fund. We have two projects in this fund for the biennial well 11. With a total estimated project cost of $8 million and well 13, which has a total project cost of 8.1 million dollars. And we should really be completing well 13. As the carryover to 2021 and just ramping up well 11 in 21 and 22. I do want to point out that we are funding $600,000 for design in 2021 to be paid for from REIT 2. And the big piece of this project, which we have not solved yet. Is the 7.3 million dollars for construction. So we have not included in the budget, we are simply funding the design portion and we will have to solve this issue next year. As we get a more firm number on what the construction costs are going to be.
Part of the agreement, we have McCormick Woods that we have to bring this well online. And I'm a member of the city of Bremerton, excuse me, for the, is our, one of our solutions.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. Well, 13, we anticipate about 2.4 million dollars roughly will be carried over to be completed in 2021. We look forward to getting that project behind our backs as well. Move on to the storm drainage capital construction. Again, no capital construction projects currently. I did want to remind council that we just, at the last council meeting, approved the purchase-to-sale agreement for right of way. And we are using this storm water capital fund to make those purchases of roughly $530,000. So as we enter 2021, we should, we will have a low fund balance in that capital construction fund. So with a low fund balance, there was not a whole lot of capital projects we could do anyways. So I don't think that's a setback and I think it's important that we actually get the comprehensive plan done correctly and right in order to fully. Inform our, our strategy for storm drainage capital construction going forward. Last but not least is the fund 433 for sewer capital instruction. We've talked about this one already, that's the marine pump station, that eight million dollars. For the total project cost, we are currently spending about $270,000 in this biennial period and the remainder will push to the next. Our funding sources, we've identified, again, thanks to action by the council in increasing our CFC rates. If the forecast holds true, we will receive the 2.7 million dollars in CFC revenue, connection revenue in the explaining. So that's, that's the big risk for this project as we watch it and monitor it in the next biennial period. Other than that, we have the funds for the operating and we have the loan secured. So it's really going to be on whether those connections come in as we are projecting. So I know that was really fast. I just want to give council a sneak peek of coming attractions for the coming budget coming up. And with that, I could turn it back over to Mayor.
So Noah, I know that was just blinding fast. Can you send that PowerPoint to the, all the council members? So they have time to digest it when we're all not a little rummy here late at night.
Yep.
A little lightly, there's pieces, we're meeting with Public Works tomorrow to go over their budgets, in particular the transportation elements. Because we're getting information about grants, what, what we haven't gotten and what we may get. Could change some of the, what we bring forward. So just, it's a draft. Councilmember Clausen.
Just a quick question, Noah. I should know this answer, repaving our city streets, is that in capital or is that at operating? Or is it anywhere?
We talked about that today at the Transportation Committee and I'll let back answer that question.
Right, we had a lengthy discussion about that, John, and Noah. Gave you the capital side, he did not give you the other side. We have deficits and. We can go into detail, but it's kind of late to do that. No. What we looked at and what Public Works is going to look at is trying to figure out how we can even maintain the. Degraded condition standard of our, our streets within this budget.
Our goodness.
Sure, there will be more to come.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more to come and, and again, we didn't get into details due to the timing. We reviewed the OO2 budget with the Transportation Committee. And where we currently sit, and again, we have to have some conversations with the mayor and Public Works tomorrow and really review this over. But where we sit as of today, we're approximately $800,000 to the negative in 2021 and $800,000 to the negative in 2022. Prior to any significant commitment towards pavement preservation. So part of the challenge of the team is to first solve the $800,000 issue and then. Regroup with the whole council on what transportation investment looks like and means for the city. regroup with the whole council on what transportation investment looks like it means for the city.
I hope so, because we're going to be in a big deficit with our streets in our city if we don't do something, so.
But, because I know we're not doing committee reports, but at our last committee meeting, Chris went over our capacity projects, our capital projects that are in our tip. And the committee got educated on those, and we had a meeting today on our centers and oh, the centers and just regular street projects. And those are projects, those are not preservation. And at our next meeting, Chris is going to go over the preservation piece for it. But we, we need to have discussions on additional revenue. We, that's, that's the bottom line. We're probably going to have to spend considerable time at a work study going over the options once we're fully educated on the need.
I'm thankful we have, we've established this transportation committee so that I guess there's more ownership in the process and what, what the challenges are, because I want to pave the streets as badly as you do. But money is what money is, and you know, there's dollars from development that allow us to, you know, do certain things, but we don't, you know, anyway, we're mumble laboring the conversation we had probably three hours ago at the Transportation Committee.
Yeah, and I just want to remind the full council that part of the challenge as we've developed this 2122 budget is that the TBD revenue is no longer available to us. So we just took a $200,000 cut on our revenue front. You know, the only revenue sources we have available to us are the property taxes, which we're budgeting about a million dollars per year as well as the motor vehicle fuel tax, which we are seeing a declining trend this year. I'm contributing to COVID, lack of people driving with the stay-at-home order. So we normally would receive what, 275,000, and we're on pace for 230,000. So we're seeing a shortfall in our transportation revenue, both from the loss of TBD and now motor vehicle fuel tax. So we really do have some operational revenue challenges.
And we have a street maintenance challenge as well, so I appreciate that. So more to come, I'm sure.
Okay, we are, see no members of the public. We have our, we're in our next citizen comment period. The council members and Noah and myself, and of course, our attorney, are going to go into an executive session pursuant to RCW 4031101I. And the city will hold, I'm thinking we're going to be in executive session for, we'll start with 30 minutes due to discuss legal risk of a proposed action or current practice with legal counsel. And so.
And Mayor, can we invite Debbie Lund, if she's still on the line? I can't.
We're going to invite Debbie Lund and Matt Brown after we do the first two items. So they're going to get, we're going to go to a breakout room, and Brandy's going to send them over when we get done with the first two items. So everybody else, Mark, you can head home and.
Don't we have an item tonight that Nick and I need to stick around for?
No, Charlie can, Charlie can handle it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so for this particular breakout, it's just going to be council members and the attorney?
Everybody but Debbie and Matt.
Okay, so Nick and Mark on this one?
Nope, nope, they're, they're done for the night.
Okay, so let me, okay. Okay, and then real quick, I'm going to pause the recording. I'm back, recording.
It is now 10:09, and we're back from executive session. And we are adjourning the City Council meeting for September 22nd. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everyone.